I'm six point nine zero. Project NA eighteen, the bid bond is signed and attached. Their bid for this project is sixty thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty cents. Six zero one two five point five zero. Total for them is one hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty cents. One three five nine eight two point four zero. The next bidder we have is Peterson Contractors. Bid bond for W R six is signed and attached. Their bid for this project is sixty-two thousand four hundred and five dollars and eighty cents. Six two four zero five point eight zero. Their bid bond for project NA eighteen is signed and attached. Their bid for this project is forty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Four seven five nine seven point eight five. Their total is one hundred and ten thousand. And three dollars and sixty-five cents. The next bidder we have for these projects is progressive structures. Bid bond for W R six is signed and attached. Their bid for this project is seventy-two thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars. And five cents, seven two eight one one point zero five. The bid bond for NA eighteen is signed and attached. Their bid for this project is sixty-one thousand seven hundred and nine, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Again, sixty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Six one seven seven nine point nine five. Their total for these projects is one hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars and zero cents. One three four five nine one point zero zero. Next bidder we have is Rognes Brothers. Lake Mills. Project W R six, the bid bond is signed and attached. Rognes Brothers Excavating should be on the third page. Their bid for this project. Is eighty-four thousand two hundred and two dollars and zero cents. Eight four two zero two point zero zero. Our bid bond for project NA eighteen. Is signed and attached. Their bid for this project is sixty-four thousand six hundred and forty dollars and seventy-eight cents. Six four six four zero point seven eight. Their total for this, these projects is one hundred and forty-eight thousand. Eight hundred and forty-two dollars. And seventy-eight cents. One four eight eight four two point seven eight. Next bidder we have is vitamin. Their bid bond is signed and attached for Warren six. W R six. For this project. Is seventy-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy cents. Seven one eight nine two point seven zero. Their bid bond for project NA eighteen is signed and attached. Their bid for this project is fifty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. Five nine three nine nine point seven three. Their total for the, these projects is one hundred and thirty-one thousand. Two hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-three cents. One three one two nine two point four three. That was our last. So it appears. Peterson Contractors was a little bitter. Check numbers and then bring that back for award next. Correct. First bidder we have for this project is OMG Midwest, Des Moines Asphalt State. Their bid bond is signed and attached. This is for project.
No, I mean.
Des Moines Asphalt. Their bid for this project. Is one hundred and eighty-seven. One hundred and eighty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And eighty-nine cents. One eight seven six five eight point eight nine. Next bidder we have. Is inroads. See. Their bid bond is signed and attached. Their bid for this project. Is. This is for, excuse me, this is for the other project. It bought this project. Is signed and attached. Their bid for this project is one hundred and seventy-four thousand forty dollars. And seventy cents. One seven four zero four zero point seven zero. But that's is our final bidder. This project. Bid bond. Signed and attached. Their bid for this project. Is one hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. One four seven five eight eight point five eight. And it appears Manassas a little bitter on that present, so we'll check numbers and bring that back next week as well. The first bidder that we have for this project. Is Des Moines Asphalt again. Their bid bond is signed and attached. There's also an addendum on this, they have included and signed. Their bid for this project. Is one million three hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. One three two eight four four two point six five. Inroads is the next bidder on this project. Their bid bond is signed and attached. The addendum is attached and signed as well. Their bid for this project. Is one million one hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. One one three three one four three point three eight. Manassas is the final bidder on this project. Their bid bond is signed. And attached. The addendum is signed and attached as well. Their bid for this project is one million twenty-five thousand. Two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. That's one zero two five two seven nine point six nine. So it appears Manassas is a little bitter on this project. So we'll check the numbers and then bring it back again next. The first bidder that we have for these two projects is Jasper Construction Services. Their bid bond for H three is signed and attached. Their bid for H three is ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty cents. Nine seven seven eight six point two zero. For project C O L three thirty-two. Their bid bond is signed and attached. And their bid for this project is two hundred and eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and zero cents. Two eight nine seven six zero point zero zero. Their total for these two projects is three hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Five hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty cents. Three eight seven five four six point two zero. The next bidder we have. Is J B Holland Construction. Their bid bond for H three is signed and attached. Their bid for this project is. Ninety-seven thousand. Seventy dollars and ninety-three cents, nine seven zero seven zero point nine three. For project C O L thirty-two, their bid bond is signed and attached. Their bid for this project. Is one hundred and eighty-five thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars and zero cents. One eight five three two five point zero zero. Their total is two hundred and eighty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-three cents. The next bidder we have is. On Track. We did not receive one from Midwest, so On Track's not on your list if you want to write it in that. On Track Construction. Track. T R A C K. Nevada. Their bid bond is signed and attached. For project H. Their bid for this project. Is one hundred and forty-nine thousand. Even and zero zero cents, so one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. One four nine zero 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 point zero zero. For project C O L thirty-two, their bid bond is signed and attached. Their bid for C O L thirty-two is two hundred and thirty-nine thousand three hundred and five dollars and zero cents. Two three nine three zero five point zero zero. Their total for the projects is three hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Three hundred and five dollars. Three eight eight three zero five point zero zero. The next bidder we have is Peterson Contractors. Their bid bond for project H three. Is signed and attached. Their bid for project H three is. Seventy-seven thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and thirty cents, seven seven five six zero point three zero. Their bid bond for project C O L thirty-two. Signed and attached. Their bid for project C O L thirty-two is. One hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. And ten cents. One seven three seven eight one point one zero. Their total is two hundred and fifty-one thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars and forty cents. Two five one three four one point four zero. The next bidder we have is progressive structures. Their bid bond for project H three is signed and attached. Their bid for this project is eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and zero cents. Eight seven nine one zero point zero zero. Their bid bond for project C O L thirty-two is signed and attached. Their bid for this project. Is. One hundred and seventy thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and zero cents. One seven zero four six two point zero zero. Their bid for the two projects is two hundred and fifty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars and zero cents. Their bid is two five eight three seven two point zero zero. Next bidder we have is Rognes Brothers. The project H three, their bid bond is signed and attached. Their bid for project H three. One hundred and four thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and ten cents. One zero four nine one six point one zero. Project C O L thirty-two, their bid bond is signed and attached. Their bid for this project is two hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred dollars and eighty cents. Two two five nine zero zero point eight zero. Their project total for the two is three hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety cents. Three three zero eight one six point nine zero. And our last bidder is Whiteyman. For project H three, their bid bond is signed and attached. Their bid for project H three is eighty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-two cents. Eight seven five nine six point nine two. Project C O L thirty-two. Their bid bond is signed and attached. Their bid for C O L thirty-two is one hundred and ninety-three thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-one cents. One nine three one seven seven point six one. Their total for the two projects is two hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-three cents. Two eight zero seven seven four point five three. So it appears. Peterson Contractors, my friend back is the low bidder on this one, so we'll double check the numbers and bring it back next week.
Looking on at our agenda, we have agency reports sent for creative justice. We have someone from C C J online that would love to make comments with regards to their report. We all had it ahead of time. Yeah, can you raise your hand so that we can unmute you? Or hit Taylor, Taylor, Derek. Good morning, Taylor.
Good morning.
So thank you for your report, we're just trying to see if you want to highlight. Some of what's been going on at C C J.
Definitely, well, thank you all for having me here today. As most of you know, the Center for Creative Justice is a community-based, private, nonprofit agency, providing correctional supervision to adult criminal offenders placed on probation by the local judiciary. C C J enhances public safety while aiding in the rehabilitation of criminal offenders. Our clients are your neighbors, employees, coworkers, friends, and possibly even members of your family. C C J's probation officers help clients get their lives back on track by providing positive guidance in all areas of life. Our rehabilitative services reduce crime in our community, decrease victimization, and lessen the burden on our courts and jails. Just a brief update on the COVID-19 pandemic response. C C J has followed all Iowa Department of Public Health guidelines and has been successful in keeping our clients and staff safe. The only significant change that has been made in our services is an increase in phone and video calls rather than in-person appointments for some of our low-risk clients. Clients that are higher risk or violent offenders are still receiving in-person services with the recommended Iowa Department of Public Health guidelines being strictly followed. We plan to resume more in-person contacts as soon as we are safely able to do so. Despite the difficulties that resulted from the pandemic, I would like to share a few of our statistics. I am happy to report that our Clear Impact Scorecard continues to reflect the positive impact our program has had throughout the community. Eighty-four percent of clients completed their probation period and court-ordered requirements successfully in the 2019-2020 fiscal year. And ninety percent of clients that were previously released successfully did not reoffend in the 2019-2020 fiscal year. I also would like to share that nearly ninety-seven percent of all clients surveyed at the time of their successful release have reported having made a positive change in their lives. If there is any doubt, I believe these measures truly reflect the importance of our program and the widespread positive impact our team has been able to make. Our scorecard also shows how closely our program and its outcomes align with the funding priorities of Story County. We continue to connect a large number of clients with mental health and substance use services, assist them in finding and keeping employment, and educate individuals. assist them in finding and keeping employment, and educate individuals on all the resources available in the community. All of these components allow the individual to better meet the safety and well-being needs of their children and their families. Though this past year has not been without its unique challenges, we have also been reminded of the meaning and importance of true community. We have the most success when we work together as a community, and the Story County community exemplifies this every day. We are incredibly grateful for our teammates, our clients, and our community members. C C J is also so thankful for Story County and all of the asset funders for their support and all the programs and services that they make possible. Though the coming months do bring some uncertainty, C C J knows that we are stronger together. And with the help of the Story County community, the Center for Creative Justice will continue to provide our much-needed services to our clients and fulfill our mission. Thank you. I would be happy to have, answer any questions that you have at this time.
Questions, any questions?
This is London Mark, and I do have a couple, Taylor, and thank you for your report. I really appreciate the recidivism statistics, the completion statistics, and the recidivism measure the year after people are off supervision. I don't see any numbers here on the total number that you've served, new admission, those kinds of things. I just see the percentages. Did you not put those in because they're in the Clear Act scorecard?
Yes, so those are in our scorecard, which I can go ahead and go through those numbers. We're updating our scorecard annually, so I do have those numbers if you'd like me to share those.
Maybe, maybe just quickly, but also could you send a link?
Yeah. Absolutely. So the total number of clients that we served in the 2019, 2020 fiscal year was nine hundred and three. And the total number of clients that completed probation supervision successfully was four hundred and thirteen. Some other stats that we usually share would be programming, which can also be located on our scorecard. It looks like we referred two hundred and eighty-seven clients to substance abuse evaluations or treatment, forty-three to mental health evaluations or treatment, and twenty-nine to domestic violence programming. But I will also send out a link to our scorecard to share that.
And I also, you used to do cognitive behavioral classes or some high-skill classes in person. Have you been doing those, continuing those remotely?
Yes, so we are still facilitating anger management programming. That is a six-week course that we offer. We are currently in the middle of a session, and last fall, we did do our first full online programming course. That went really well, so we'll continue to offer that online via Zoom until it's safely possible to go ahead and hold that in person again.
Thank you.
Taylor, this is Latifa. Do you have the number for how many people participated in the welding program?
Yes, so we had three of our clients successfully complete the welding program that we partnered with the United Way for.
Thank you. I don't have any additional questions. My question's gonna be a total number served, so you answered that. And I would like to, supervisor, if you said you send us the link to scorecard, I think that'd be helpful.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you for your time and the information and all the hard work that you and your staff are doing.
Thank you.
Looking on at our agenda, excuse me, recognition about the Story County twenty twenty years of service awards. We had a recognition within our office last week, but I will go through and just recognize all the staff and their contributions to Story County, their years of service. Starting with thirty years, we have Joe Quaker from Conservation and Scott Wall from the Auditor's Office. At twenty-five years, Patty Healman from the Auditor's Office, Jim Holick from Secondary Roads, Lisa Markley from the Auditor's Office, and David Water, Secondary Roads. Excuse me. Twenty years, Erin Morkin, Facility Management, Brett Johnson, Sheriff's Office, Timothy Neill, the Attorney's Office, Melanie Worley from Community Services. At fifteen years, we have Catherine Bezlinzki from Environmental Health, Dennis Clapp, Secondary Roads, Latifa Faisal from the Board of Supervisors Office, Shelley Grunberg from Facility Management, Anna Henderson, Animal Control, Joe Navratil from Sheriff's Office, Elizabeth Quinn from the Sheriff's Office, Erin Reworks, Community Services, Anthony Rhodes, Sheriff's Office, Jane Schroeder, Sheriff's Office, Jeffrey Scott, Sheriff's Office, Rhonda Skyes from the Auditor's Office, and Ronald Gemlin from Facility Management. Ten years, Amy Circa from the Attorney's Office, Edel Christiansen from the Sheriff's Office, Matthew Corey, Environmental Health, Sandra Fitzgerald, Recorder's Office, Christine Mackey from the Auditor's Office, Mindy Bickers, the Attorney's Office, and Kevin Warren from Facility Management. At five years, we have Joby Brogdon at Facility Management, Jordan Carmen from the Sheriff's Office, Julie Erickson from the Attorney's Office, Kristen Formanek from the Attorney's Office, Tyler Graham, the Attorney's Office, Cody Hamilton, the Sheriff's Office, Stephanie Jones, Environment, the Health, and Planning and Development, Jordan Lentz from the Sheriff's Office, Matthew Massaro from the Sheriff's Office, Benjamin Matchin, the Attorney's Office, Malal McLaughlin from the Board of Supervisors Office, Kathy Naumann for the Treacher's Office, Timothy Patterson from Information and Technology, Ryan Peterson, Secondary Roads, Lynette Van Wygarden from the Attorney's Office, Elizabeth Waggie from Conservation, and Nicole Wilson from the Recorder's Office. Thank you all for all of your years of service to Story County. Our department certainly couldn't run without all of your dedicated work. Thank you very much. Any other supervisors who'd like to add any additional comments?
Just a lot of good work to go through the last year. Thanks, everybody. Yeah, thank you, everybody.
Looking on, we have consideration of the February second, twenty-one minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes presented? Second, moved by Markin, seconded by Faisal, Markin, I, Faisal, I, Kevin, I. Next, we have consideration of personnel actions. Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions as presented? Moved by Faisal, seconded by Markin, Faisal, I, Markin, I, Kevin, I. About consent agenda, anyone pulling any stick for the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda presented? Moved by Markin, seconded by Faisal, Markin, I, Faisal, I. Kevin, I. Next, looks like we have, there are no public hearing items. Then we go on to additional items, discussion and consideration of hiring free exemption requests for secondary roads summer help.
This is our annual summer help hiring time of year. We typically hire three to four summer help each year to supplement our crews for a couple of reasons. One, we have a lot of additional work going on in the summer that requires warm manpower, which includes traffic flagging, and we have three to four mowers going at all times, and that, they really help out with the mowing. And secondly, our main crews build up a lot of comp time during the winter, and we don't allow a lot of vacation in the winter due to the necessity of being here. So we have a lot of comp time and vacation taken in the summer, so this really helps fill that gap as well. So, so yeah, I'm looking to hire three to four. We usually have a kind of a hard time finding them. We did bump the salary up a year or two ago, which helped, so we hope to find at least three to four. Any questions?
There a motion to approve the hiring free exemption request for secondary roads for summer help positions? I move to. Next, Faisal, I, Markin, I, Kevin, I. Next, we have discussion and consideration of the rise grant application to pave two twentieth street from five eightieth Avenue to five ninetieth Avenue.
Morning again, dear.
Morning. We start with a little background information on how we've gotten to this point. Let's see, I'd better raise my hand to share my screen. Okay, thanks. There we go. I have to get rid of the stuff on the left, but, okay. This is part of the presentation I gave to the board last summer, I believe. Kind of update, yeah, where we got the progress we had on thirteenth street. At that time, we had planned to pave the two miles. Shown in yellow here. So it's planned to pave these two miles of thirteenth street or two hundred and twentieth street with the bond funds. Go back to my prior screen. We designed the project, and then it was put on hold a little over a year ago, mainly because of our right-of-way negotiations. Kind of came to a standstill, and I needed some board input at the time. And at that time, that particular owner was leaving for the winter, and then COVID hit, and so we just put it on hold for a little bit, so. But since, while we were on hold, a few more things happened. We had some drainage district number five developments, which included a possible lawsuit. So that made those negotiations a little more difficult at that point. The city in Nevada currently has no plans to pave six hundredth Avenue. I could show you what that is. A number of years ago, when we put this on the program, we kind of had an informal agreement with the city that if we paved this, the city annexed both sides of the road, so that's entirely city for that half a mile. If we included that in our project, the city would agree to pave six hundred. This portion of it's gravel still, where this is paved up to the railroad tracks. So the city was gonna pave that, and we'd have a paved loop down to Lincoln Way. That is no longer in the city's plans. That may change. We'll bring the city up here a little later. So that was one thing that happened. Some of the others were Ames' future plans for five eightieth railroad crossing are unclear. And that was one of my biggest understandings of why this, the board wanted to put this project on the program was, it was talk about Ames possibly closing this railroad crossing permanently to put some sightings in here, which would increase traffic on the gravel portion to twentieth, because that would be cut off. Since then, talking with the city, there does not seem to be a big push to do that. And also, five eightieth, south of their highway thirty, the D O T, it's pretty much solidified their plans to do the interchange at five eightieth, which would make sense not to close that, because that's gonna even increase the traffic even more coming up five eightieth. So we, at this point, we anticipate that railroad crossing to stay open, which kind of decreases the need to pave two twentieth. And the last thing is a minor issue, the, the bond issue that we did, did not include the paving of thirteenth street, the funding for it. So we would have to bond it again, just issue bonds again. We've approved to do the bonding, we just have to issue another bond issue, so. Minor issue there. So going back to the right-of-way negotiation issue, I gave a little history on some of the values we paid for some of our recent paving projects. Six hundredth Avenue, which is fairly close to this, we paid ten thousand, eleven thousand per acre. Grant University both had some pretty highly developable ground, so that value got bumped up a little bit to fourteen thousand per acre on both of those projects. So for thirteenth street, we, we had it professionally appraised, and we have found out the same appraiser was used by the D O T to do all the five eightieth interchange right-of-way appraisals too. So it's an appraiser used a lot for road projects. It came back at ten thousand, three hundred, which did match a recent sale along two hundred and twentieth street in the area. The highest comp sale in that appraisal was eleven, seven. I can't talk too much about our negotiations, that particular landowner, because that's confidential until it's final. But we did, we did not go above that number with our offer. We just, I needed some more board input before I felt comfortable doing that, so it's kind of where it stood. Little more information on land values. I S U land study, which we use a lot, had the highest value in our area, it was just under ten thousand dollars for high-quality farm ground. To do the two-mile project, it required eight point one two acres total. And if we paid the ten, three, four, that right-of-way cost would be eighty-three thousand, six hundred. If we're just talking about this one-mile paving, that requires four point two four acres. What that is, it's seventeen feet additional on each side of the road. And a little bit more, there's a box over at Bridge. That requires a little more bump out at the bridge. But other than that, it's mostly seventeen feet additional. If Nevada annexes, what they propose, the Verbiage site to be on, that would include point eight eight acres. That's included in this four point two four, so you could subtract that out of this four point two four. Just to give you a feel, so if we move ahead with just the first mile, I estimate we're talking fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars in right-of-way costs. Talk about traffic counts a little bit. We finally got our twenty nineteen traffic counts in. COVID slowed those numbers down. This is the first mile right here of thirteenth street, two fifty. That didn't change from the prior four years. The second mile did drop to one forty. It used to be a hundred and eighty vehicles a day. Just to give you an idea of the traffic counts in the area. We have a representative for Verbiage here. He can probably talk a little bit more about projected traffic counts if this development does go. I think we're in the neighborhood of forty to fifty vehicles per day added to this first mile. And that may change depending on our discussion later. We'll talk about that in a second. That brings us to the RISE program. As you may or may not know, RISE is all based off of job creation. We're talking about a possibility of fifty-six new high-quality jobs here that the D O T considers high-quality. Our discussion with the D O T, we originally estimated about thirteen thousand dollars per job. She thought we probably needed to bump that down a little bit. We won't know for sure till we apply, but she thought. She thought we probably needed to bump that down a little bit, we won't know for sure till we apply, but she thought ten to eleven thousand dollars per job was a better estimate for right now. So if we use all fifty six jobs on the top line there, that's where the five hundred sixty thousand dollars of the rice grant comes from. The second line is what's left over to come up to the one point three five million total. And then just as a starting point, I put in a couple of numbers, if we broke it strictly by percentage of road, what would be Nevada's and what would be story counties? So what would be left to six hundred and eighteen for story county and one hundred and seventy for city Nevada? I would comment too, I was interested in our letting this morning for asphalt job, the the million dollar asphalt job, that was a bonding project. And our estimate was one point two millions, that number came in pretty good, so that. We were already going to have about four hundred and fifty thousand left over in bond money that we could apply towards this, and that just added another couple hundred thousand. So that pretty well covers our portion, so we would not have to bond again to do this first mile, so I wanted to make that clear. If we use the bond money to do this. This is just a snippet of the RISE application, I attached it to the board agenda just for your information, it is not ready for approval. All I'm asking for today is approval to continue on with the RISE application. And we bring it back once we had it, all all the information filled out on it for board official approval. That's all I have for an update on that, at this point, I'd probably bring a. Couple more quick comments while John's coming up here, our meeting with the DOT, a couple other things came out of that. They pointed out, if the county does apply right now, we are able to back out of the rice grant at any time. After that, if if we want to, I just want to make sure of that, so applying right now does not tie you into anything. Secondly. We would need payroll information from Verbio at at some point, well, you need it right up front, and then three years after the roadway is open. They have to submit two more payrolls after that to prove. Their payroll status. And there is some issues with, she mentioned, we need to make sure that Verbio would commit to doing. That payroll documentation, there's a couple of different ways that you can document payrolls. And apparently there might be another grant involved with the state, as you mentioned, that's a different type of payroll, so they'd actually have to do two different payrolls, so. We can talk about that with Verbio when he comes up to make sure that they're willing to do that for it, otherwise the jobs won't be credited. Uh, there's a couple of things I want to point out, but at that point, I'll turn it over to John.
One, sorry, question.
Yep.
You said that if we apply now, you can still back out, is there a time frame?
Yeah, I spoke, once they approve it and come back, well, I'm sure then we can have to sign an actual agreement form with them.
It it is a, good morning, board, it is a reimbursement, so presumably if we went down the path and ultimately didn't end up paving the road for for whatever reason. Ultimately, we could basically give that back to them, cancel that contract out, so, because it is a reimbursement, so. Hall, H A L L, so, Nevada Economic Development Council. Good morning, board, I appreciate the opportunity to be back in front of you. Latifah's, first time I've been in front of you and and with this project too, Darren gave it gave a great overview. Last time we all met, there were a few questions you wanted us to get some some clarifications on. Unfortunately, you know, the five hundred and eightieth railroad crossing is one that it's just not on the city of Ames' radar on if that's going to be. Closed or if they are willing to commit to not closing it. But I think, given everything that Darren has shared about the DOT's plan for an interchange of five eightieth at highway thirty. I think that the prevailing thoughts are, is that it likely will not close. But that being said, because of the way the rail access is through that area, new industry on either. The east or west side of five hundred and eightieth may end up with additional rail spurs then crossing. Five hundred and eightieth, which may just lead to additional congestion and additional train cars potentially stop on that road. So while it's not an immediate pressing issue that that could get closed, it may be hindered going into to the future as development occurs on either side. So we're really back to see about pursuing this rise grant and 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 getting the county's interest in actually. Helping us to to get this road completed to support industry here in story county. Since our conversations lasted place, we've had additional conversations with the company. And per advice of and and all that Greg come up and speak about this, but for advice of of their their person who's in charge of really all the. Ag relationships and and the stover movement to and from the facility, including what would be stored on this site. The recommendations is to pursue right turns only, so they have interest in seeing that full two miles of two hundred and twentieth paved. And ultimately seeing six hundred paved back down to Lincoln Highway for their needs, I think. We can probably distinguish this into two separate pieces, but I wanted to provide that to you in the the kind of the overall context of. Of what we're talking about, because I think we can still pursue the rise on that first mile, ultimately, if we did a bigger project, the rise dollars going in wouldn't change one way or another. But I think looking at the the two mile project as was originally proposed. Is is going to be of value to the to the industry and to the company here today. At this time, I'll invite Greg to come up and talk a little bit about the company's proposed plans, what they're looking at. Answer any questions that you all might have, and then we do have Jordan Cook from the city in Nevada here to answer questions on behalf of the city, but. Yeah, do you guys have any questions for me before I turn it over to to Greg? Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, board, Greg Faith with Verbio. For for bio, so we recently acquired the the property around two hundred twentieth and five ninety. It was a part of the Evergreen property, a hundred and three acres. And our plan is is to to take that site and we're considering. And we're working with the Union Pacific about putting a rail spur on there, so we're considering using that as a rail spur. Coming off there, the other two parts of that property is we're considering putting stofor. Stofor storage site in buildings and then potentially storing our, unless our fertilizer type product there, so. You know, so we have, you know, as Darren said, we had a lot of traffic projecting maybe thirty to sixty trucks a day. Going back and forth from the main site to to this site as well.
Thirty fifty truck per day, you just said?
Yeah.
And the road that would be the shortest way to get there has been closed, and that's why you're looking at doing.
Correct, correct.
So instead of having trucks go a half a mile, they're going to be going.
Right, they're going to be.
Six miles potentially.
Yeah, they're going to be going to five eighty and then back to the, you know, and then back to Tony up into the site. Yes.
I'll just get to the chase here, there's been some discussion about development agreement. That. By the question whether the file would be going to pay back part of the rise grant, except all the employee numbers have not been met. Has that been discussed with you?
Yes, it is.
And what's your response to that?
Yeah, I mean, we can consider putting it in the development agreement. Yep.
I think it's worth noting, on a call that Darren and I had with the DOT. The the way the payback would work is ultimately if it gets paid, let's say zero jobs were created. The county would be responsible for half of the payback on that, the DOT would would eat the other half of that effectively. So the development agreement will ultimately be for a half of that, that would be a move back to the the DOT or the county's portion of it, so.
Okay, and and. Greg, you're not talking space, right?
Yeah, yes.
Would you, is that as available to provide, you're saying we'd be willing to consider? How strong is that?
Yeah, I mean, we we would.
You'd be willing to do it?
Yes, we'd be willing to do it.
So that would be, you would pay back three hundred nine thousand. Hundred and sixty dollars to DOT, because the, no, that's the certain, five hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah, if if it was paved and we know we didn't create the jobs, yeah.
And then if it's, and and I don't know which one you answer, but it's some jobs you created, but not enough, it's that that's all rated. Casey, so you don't need to run that by anybody else, you can connect to that.
All right, well, I'll have to talk to. I'll have to talk to Germany about it.
They're willing to ask.
Yeah, no, definitely, yeah.
Because when we look at the numbers, you know, we would be doing this primarily for your benefit.
Yes.
So, yeah, so that's why that would be important, okay. That was my main question for.
I was just going to add, so so I know Greg's ability to commit to that said said past today is is difficult, but. Through the I E D A process with the with financial assistance from the state of Iowa, the company has entered into similar agreements for re for repayment. Based on job creation and capital investments in the state of Iowa, so this would not be outside the realm of things that the company has already previously committed to. And would likely be committing to again for this additional expansion, and then we roll in the. This as part of a development agreement with the county. As part of that overall negotiation package.
Now, the the question is, this is for that structure on that of road that the county have. So is there any discussions with Nevada, if I know you'd like that additional six hundred streets so that you can make that loop? As well. I just didn't know if that's been. I guess my question is, if that section is not taken care of, where you can't do that full paid loop, then is that kind of a. Not null and void, I guess, portion of that negotiation for saying, yes, if we don't meet the, you know, employee requirements or something, we have to pay back.
I don't think we're going to apply that way, do you think, John?
No, so I think our intention is to apply for that first mile of road for the RISE application, understanding that at at a minimal level, the company is going to need paid access based on their truck volume. Their recommendation to not take left turns is is really based on traffic patterns. But ultimately, if they had equipment that had to be on paved surfaces, there'd be a paid path back out that way. I think the intention was to bring forward this discussion, knowing that you guys had previously planned for the two miles, you've done the engineering on it. To to find out if there's a a conversation about doing that whole two miles. And then what the city would be willing to to consider or that additional pavement on six hundred. And and I'll be honest, I sprung this on Jordan probably an hour and a half ago, as this has been coming up really in the last couple of days, so. I I just wanted to bring that forward as kind of that larger discussion, our intention with the rise is to go for that that.
Okay, okay. Question number two, the second mile in the RISE grant.
There'd really be no point, because we're capped at that dollar amount anyway, so, yeah, we're not going to get any more money out of it.
So you're looking today for the direction of whether moving forward with the grant application?
Correct, I don't want to speak for Jordan, so it might be good to have him come up, I'm I'm saying they have a portion just in that rice ground, make sure they're okay with that. When that pass the meters, that might be good to do that.
Let's hear from Jordan on that and also on the one six hundred.
Morning supervisors. So. Previously, we had a discussion about this, it got brought up first time, probably. I would say July or August, is that when we kind of?
Yeah.
And I was told that we were kind of discussing this previously before I was hired and brought onto the city, so. It is something that it would be benefit, like you were saying, it would only benefit one company, but we see Verbio as a big part of our community as well as our county. And that's going to help attract more people as well as bring more people, so it is something that will be a positive growth for the city. And that is one reason why we we would support this. I briefly talked finances with our clerk about this, and it is something that is possible. But it is something that I would ask for. If we would be able to repay it, not all at once, but in a a couple of year, because we, as you guys already know, we have a lot of projects in the making. And we want to make sure we have everything financially available for for it. Originally, when I spoke with Karen about it, the amount was a little bit less, and she said that is definitely feasible. The amount that we discussed earlier was a hundred and fifty eight thousand, which is not that much lower, so I don't see it making a a difference to the point where it wouldn't work for us. If we can talk, I can talk a little bit about six hundred, this, we haven't.
Make sure.
Yeah.
A hundred and fifty eight thousand, you have, we're talking right now, what you just talked about was the first mile.
The twenty two percent of what.
Seventy one, and you're saying doable, but not immediately, so your proposal is that the county would pay it and you would pay it back. Over a couple of years.
Correct.
That's the first one.
Or on that, a couple of quick comments, I just learned from DOT. When we submit this proposal, we have to have an estimate for the county portion and an estimate for the city portion, assuming you annex, I assume that's in the works. And that will be a little different than the percentage here, it'll be strictly the pavement within the city limits. This actually includes, there's a bridge included in that mile, which is about three hundred thousand dollars, so that kind of bumps up the county portion a little bit. So if we do strictly the estimate within the city limits, it's probably going to be less than that hundred and seventy thousand, because it's only going to be paid. So we'll have to decide how we're going to split that out. Yeah, or or we could do the percentage, we could work those details out, but we're in that ballpark.
And then for six hundredth, that is, you know, like John said, that is something that we we briefly discussed earlier, and. I have brought that topic up with one of their engineers as well as Greg Faith before, and it it at this time, it's not anything that we were planning on doing, but it doesn't mean that it's out of the works. We have talked to him about deeding that whole entire thing over to him, that road over to him, so they would basically be in charge of of all that, but. It's just been a discussion, we haven't gotten any further than basically the idea.
Six hundred is the group we're beating a lot.
Oh, I'm thinking of five ninety. Never mind, we haven't discussed six hundred, my apologies.
Yeah, my apologies, I'm still getting the roads. Down a little bit.
Yeah. We have to check them.
Yeah.
You said you're not planning on six hundred.
That has not been a discussion for us, it doesn't mean it's out off the table, we just haven't discussed it.
When, how soon do you think you might?
It definitely will not be going in this budget season, just because our our budget. Basically, we will be finalizing that the last, the last council meeting in February and the first council meeting in March. So we won't be able to really get it into this one, but it's some, not in, no, not into fiscal twenty one, or twenty two, yeah. We're in twenty one. But it is something that we could talk about and get in in the works for twenty three.
Timing for the county would be probably letting us about a year from now, it'll be about the earliest, we'd let the project at the county, if we got the rise grant, we'll move forward with it. So we'd have some little bit of time there. We've got some details with the city.
And we usually start doing, starting our budgeting around November, December time. Would that fit in that schedule that you're?
Yeah, and I have my five year program discussion with you in a couple of weeks here, so we're going to have to decide. One, we're going to do one mile or two miles, and if we do the two miles. Yeah, do we? Do the half a mile that's in the city limits like we originally planned? do the half a mile that's in the city limits like we originally planned?
Except that second mile, a quarter of that would be Nevada.
Second mile here?
No.
This is all Nevada, hundred percent. They annex both sides.
They annex both sides. So half of that is actually, so if we did that second mile, we would only do that.
Yeah, and the same with six hundred, Nevada annexed both sites. That's hundred percent.
So you're saying six hundred is a hundred percent Nevada. The east half mile of the second mile is hundred percent Nevada.
Correct.
So our total portion would be a mile and a half. A mile.
Well, if we did the first mile, the second, yes, would be a half mile, so it would be a mile and a half.
The new portion would just be half the road. They planned annex to the center of the line of the road, I believe, on this one, so they'd take a quarter of that first mile.
You said two twentieth down the annex on one side, six hundred the annex on both sides.
Over here, they annexed a hundred percent.
Yeah, I'm staying over here, that white area.
My pointer's dying. Um yeah, on the second mile, the right mile, that's a hundred percent Nevada, half a mile. Yeah.
So the entire right away on both those portions. And this is what's the, this is what's the annex, and they'll just take half.
But the second mile, the second mile, the east mile, two twentieth. Is one half county, one half city of Nevada, correct?
This is a hundred percent Nevada, this is a hundred percent.
But then the next yellow portion, that that all count?
Okay, when you said both sides, I was.
Yeah. And and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the original discussion and reason that the the conversation that happened was that the county would take care of the entire portion of two hundred and twentieth as a way to get the city to take care of that portion on six hundred. Uh instead of coming to the city and saying, okay, take care of that half mile there and also take care of the six dot point six of a mile to go down. Uh and the city saying, well, we we have to phase it in or do that. The idea was to get it all done. Entire effectively two point six miles of road done all at the same time so that it was a connected way.
So if you only did the mile, what's in, what you're kind of hoping here, you could hold off on that additional mile.
Well, the rise grant would only be for that mile.
I get that, but if we are, if you're kind of looking future-wise, there isn't a reason necessarily to say, oh gosh, just because under the rise grant, we're gonna do that first mile to try to do a second mile at all the particular time, you can wait for that.
Can you can definitely wait. Typically, we try to do it as one project for cost effectiveness, yeah.
Six hundred, isn't the south half of that, so it's
Yes.
So you're really not paving a mile, you're paving half a mile unless.
It's about point six from here to here, um because the railroad comes at an angle, so it's about point four miles, it's paved right there. Point six from here to here. Uh and I think that's really does the point of the conversation today, discussion today is, you know, at some level, you're gonna be asking the city of Nevada to be a partner in paving these roads. The question is, the original discussion, and I understand it's completely different board since then, but the original discussion and the new uh city administrator too, so I might be the only one who's hanging on to the original discussion. But the original discussion was, the county takes care of the entire three forty, the city takes care of the six hundred portion in order to get that paved. But if we just do the one mile, the expectations, the city be a part partner in that portion. And does that make it more difficult or not? Future, it's future paving for the remainder of that. I I don't have the answers. I just wanted to make sure we had that conversation.
If you're able to raise your commitment on the whole thing, the city still be, city of Nevada still be putting in money on the rise grant first mile?
For the one seventy-one?
Yes.
So you're saying one seventy-one in addition to the half mile that we would be paving to the additional mile total?
That's my question.
Yeah, that uh that I personally would not feel comfortable making commit a commitment without looking at our finances and talking to some of our uh council members about that. I I feel comfortable on the rise grant side, that one mile, the one hundred and seventy-one thousand. But I I don't feel comfortable at this time with the additional. I uh and yes, it would be, you know, as as Darren said, it would be cheaper. It would be more cost effective to do all of this all right now. But again, I would need to get more clarification on our finances before we agree to something like that.
The rise grant for the one mile does require the city of Nevada to participate.
Yep.
So the question is, yes, if we decide to do the one mile.
We can.
You're in on that regardless, and it's the, it's the second mile, you deal on that and that's six mile, ten to a mile.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, that would be under question.
And it doesn't seem like we can make any commitments. Well, my feeling is is that without that, I'm not, I'm not really interested in dead ending that paving road there. So I don't, my personal feeling on this is that we need to just go ahead with the rise grant for the one mile. And see where what Nevada can come up with and then look at. What would be the cost of doing this piecemeal estimates, I know, on your ballpark. But what's the cost of doing this piecemeal versus doing the whole thing at once? What are the savings of doing it all at once? And I know you can't guarantee, but that might be one thing that might factor into the decision.
I mean, right now, you're just asking, is it okay to move forward and be working on it? But we have time for all that other information.
Yeah, like you said, we can pull out at any time. We we just want your approval to move forward with the submission of the grant.
Did you say when you anticipate the trucks starting to roll out there? I heard twenty twenty-two at one point.
So I guess the question is, is there a motion? Make sure I get this right, what you're looking for. To move forward with the rise grant application, a two twentieth street from five hundred eightyth avenue to five hundred ninetieth avenue? Second, I mean, discussion, yes, setting it is to pursue is that we would have to come back to this.
I think I'd just soon bring it back.
Yeah, we'll have to come back with the rest.
Okay, so that's one question.
Thank you supervisors.
Think of might be possible to see some more information regarding that second mile and six hundred.
I'll go back and speak with Karen today about it. And then uh we have a lot of meetings coming up with several council members, so I can discuss that with them as well. I've I've briefly touched on it before uh in my report that I send that them. Uh so they are aware of the rise grant and aware that we've been talking about it. Uh so I'll I'll reentertain that and uh get back to you guys. And I can forward the convers- uh the conversations as a correspondence to you guys. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to discussion and consideration of justice. Oh, I thought you were saying something about Justice Center Geothermical Well Field System Flush and Tooth Replacement for approximately fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. Is Joey on the line? Could see him on there.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm uh, this looks a little different this morning. I would like to share my screen, but I don't see the normal link to be able to do the.
Isn't it, I I think Tim is trying to do that so you can do that.
Okay.
Be able to something you should be able to now.
Okay, can you see anything on your screen? Is it? I turned myself green, but I didn't need to do that. Oh, bear with me.
Is that yours, Dan?
Yeah, that looks like that's Tim's screen, not mine.
You stop this here and then try it again.
All right, I think I did that work?
There you go.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna start with, cause the as three of you are aware, on the thirteenth of last month, contractor had uh ruptured our geothermal wellfield piping. The two supply lines that go from the building out to the wellfield that's on the north portion of the property. Um unfortunately, a lot of debris before we got the pump shut down that service. The fluid that pumps the fluid through that wellfield and throughout the building that services all of our HVAC equipment because they're geothermal heat pumps. It pumped a lot of sand, gravel and plastic bits from when they hit the the pipes themselves. I'm gonna kind of go through some pictures so you can see what we've been dealing with for the about the last almost month now. The screen on the image on your screen is one of the protection screens at our, the pumps themselves that are in the facility. That is the throat of one of our circulating pumps. As you can see, there's a lot of debris that got through the screen. And you can see some of the damage on the impeller of the pump. And here's a picture of the fluid, what the fluid looks like now that's in the in the in the whole system. That image there is a protector screen at each one that we have at each piece of equipment. You can see it is completely plugged, which stops any fluid flow to the heat pump, which long story short, it will not produce heat without fluid flowing through that coil that encompasses the compressor. That is a picture of inside of one of the heat pumps to show that the protection screen is only on the supply line. Unfortunately, when they hit the supply line first with their equipment, the pressure dropped on the supply side and both lines are pressurized. Well, and then the pressure on the return line became the higher pressure pipe, which then reversed the flow through the equipment, which caused it to put debris into all the pieces of equipment. That is one of the lines that feeds one of the heat pumps. And you can see it, it is completely plugged solid. That is what we've been getting out of the wellfield each day is we because every day we've got to open up the sections of the line and flush it to try and get this sand and gravel is primarily what it is that we're getting out. That is a picture of a check valve that is to help prevent the reverse flow of the fluid in the system. Picture's not real clear, but you can see up in there, that's debris that has kept that check valve from shutting, which is why we got reverse flow in the the piping system. More sand, dark water. Those, I'm gonna go back one. There's another, that's a screen at one of the heat pumps themselves. That is plastic bits from when they hit the pipe. They got introduced into the system because the, you know, it took us about between the time we realized they had hit it and we got the pump shut off. There was about a twenty to thirty minute time period where them pumps were pushing all this debris into the building. Yeah, I'm gonna go kind of quickly through some of these because they're just, a lot of them are repeat, and I wanna get to, we got a lot of pictures. There's another one of our, that's the other pump. We got two pumps that circulate everything. More plastic that we've pulled out of the system. And then that is a picture of one of the finer screens that's on the end inlet side of our circulating pumps that got so full of debris that the pressure collapsed the screen while the pump was running. And that also, when that happened, that allowed a lot more debris to get into the system because now the the protector, basically the filter, has collapsed and is being bypassed by whatever can get around it. And that's a picture of what the fluid looks like, and it would normally be clear like tap water. Here is as the pipes are being repaired, not only did they hit the wellfield lines, you can see they also hit one of our conduits to feed the parking lot lights out there. But that ended up being a low priority that day. Those are the repaired sections of pipe. You can see the orange lines are the lines the contractor was putting in. The two large black ones are the ones of supply and ones of return line from the wellfield to the building itself. There's a picture of them putting the repair pieces in. You can see that one section was roughly fourteen feet long of damage and the other one was about eight to ten feet. Those are the old damaged pieces of pipe. I used John as a reference to see how long, so he could get an idea, because he's about six foot two. Get an idea how big of a section it was. That's the top of the pipe. You can see where it's kind of shaved off. There's the top of it with large holes in it. Now, it's just a picture of the company that hit it. Just more pictures of the repair. Cause I know, and then you can see, there's the caution tape that they hit first before they actually hit the pipes, which they'd have stopped when they hit that. hit first before they actually hit the pipes, which they stopped when they hit that caution tape. And there is where they had at least taken the time to discover what was underneath that caution tape. If you can see my cursor, that's one end of the caution tape and the other end is kind of here and it follows along. But after they did this is when they actually hit it about twenty feet further down the line. And that was as a first, that's the beginning of one of the breaks. And that's the end of the pictures I have, but I just kind of wanted y'all to see, because I hadn't had a chance to share any of those images with you yet. So you kind of have a background on what we've been dealing with and what is in front of you now for consideration is what our next step is is to high pressure flush that, um, entire system to get all of that debris out of there. And it'll need to be done in we'll have to isolate the well field from the building and we would flush it both, essentially both directions, flush just regular water through it for a few hours until we get clear water out of it and then we would reverse the flow and push everything the other direction, because we've you know, there's roughly two hundred individual wells out in that north area of the property that, um, we're sure have a lot of that debris in them as well, so we need to push fluid through there at a higher flow rate and a higher pressure to break it loose, get it moving so that we can filter it out. And then once we have completed the well field, we will isolate the well field from the building and then do the same process, but in the building. And then in the building, we will all, there's a lot of branch lines, like those smaller lines of that one picture of the copper pipe that was plugged and we will have to make sure all those individual branch lines are free of debris. Once everything is clear to the debris, then we have to get the just regular tap water out of there and it needs to be deionized water and, um, and then a, a solution that's an antifreeze type solution. It has other chemicals in it like rust inhibitors, lubricants for the pumps in that. And that fluid needs to be in there. It keeps it from, well, anything in the well field freezing, keeps all the equipment um, lubricated and, um, it also has a it, it helps absorb the heat and that the because that's essentially what the well field does is, is the compressors in the units are removing heat from one area and putting it to other, basically to allow it to heat. The heat that the compressor generates needs to be dissipated so that the compressor doesn't overheat and that's what the well field essentially does. And so the chemical that's in with the water helps absorb that heat and transfer it to to the ground. And part of this is, is to get the amount of flow and pressure we need, we have to have large enough service ports in the system to push that volume of water. So that is part of this request as well. Is there any questions?
Joby, I just have one question. In your letter, you reference if this is approved, you'd begin to work out February twenty second. Is that still, uh?
Yep. I mean, it's hard to believe right now when you look at what temperature it is outside. You know, the, the big deciding factor was on that, was the sooner the better, contractor availability and it's still supposed to be in the twenties to thirties degrees outside temp. And what we learned when we lost, when it happened on the thirteenth, you know, how, what areas held at a safe temperature and other areas that we, uh, that dropped below, you know, nothing got unsafe, but we've been using space heaters to maintain comfortable temperatures in the building. We believe, because when we're doing the flushing of the building side of it, since we will have flow through the piping, a lot of the equipment we will be able to maintain operation of. It's when we are doing the well field itself flushing, that we will not be circulating any fluid through the building at that point. So the equipment will be down, but we will monitor it and, um, the flushing is looking like it, that portion of it'll take about a day and a half. And then the rest of it is, is getting the new chemical and the deionized water in there. And as we're doing that, all the equipment will be able to stay online. So I'm anticipating little disruption to the actual operation of the facility. Answer what your, your question?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. All right. If there were no additional questions, there, a motion to approve the Justice Center Geothermal, the, Ger- Ger- Geo- Geo- Well Field System Flush and Fluid Replacement for approximately sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars like paid for out of the insurance, insurance reserve. Then moved to second it. Any further discussion? Basil?
Hi.
Markin?
Hi.
Seven?
Hi.
Thank you, Joby.
Thank you.
Quite a month, quite too, already of, of projects to work on.
Yeah, it's not boring around here in facilities management right now, so.
All right. Well, thank you, Keith, for all your work.
Will do.
Looks like we have no departmental reports today. Other reports, discussion and direction on the draft, capital improvement, CIP, and public review process. Dan?
Hi, can you hear me?
Dan, yes, good morning.
Good. Uh, yes, good morning. Um, what I did submit for today's agenda is a revised um, piece that was redesigned to gather input for the capital improvements plan. Um, as this, that was on the agenda, so I hope you've had a chance to review it. So with this redesigned piece, there are a couple elements. On the third page, all the projects for next fiscal year are incorporated on one page. And then there's a digital element um, that you can't see right now unfortunately, because I, I can't, cannot be there to demonstrate today. Um, but you would click on the box and then you would go to a, a small project overview or project summary. And then for those projects that are associated with conservation, I've gone ahead and linked to my county parks page, so, um, individuals can find out more about that park too and the project. Um, that would be the digital piece that would be on our website. And then, um, I have paper copies that would be sent out to all city halls and libraries. What you see, um, on the agenda, but rather than clicking in the boxes, uh, there would be additional, um, pages to the end uh, to just, to describe those individual projects. So following today's action, if the board does direct staff to go ahead for public comment, I'll get all this on the, um, internet and out and mailed by Thursday at the latest. Um, and then public comment would be open until March sixteenth, at which time following that, I would compile it and bring it back to the board of supervisors. Are there any questions for me?
Linda, I had sent you an email with a couple suggestions. I don't know if I see them. Um, I know you're sending out our copies someplace and my thought was that the the descriptions of each of the individual projects, people aren't going to be able to click on the boxes and see them. So I wondered if there was some place you could put in here to encourage people to go online to look at those. Because you say to review the full plan, please visit the, the website. The full plan, I don't think has the narratives that you're going to be doing about each individual project, which I think will be more should be more helpful. I haven't seen them, but I assume it'd be more helpful for members of the public to understand exactly what's going on.
Right. Yeah, um, I have a word document that has just a summary of each project on that for fiscal year twenty-two that I would attach like a page six to this document. And then revise that language to, to click on the box. So there'd be what you're seeing for the digital version, but then the, the paper version. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't see it, but I, I think, I think you've got what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Trouble of writing these narratives, which will be actually, I think, more helpful to the general public than what we've already got on the full plan. It just would be too bad if people could only see it if they're seeing this on the website.
Right. And I, um, I apologize, I cannot share my screen because I'm calling in from my phone. Um, or else I would show you what the documents look like.
Would you send that word document to us?
I will.
Thanks. That's nothing I know. I just, I just thought this was a good, a good yeah, a good, a good way to get more information out to the public and I think it, it, it exceeds, you know, I'm assuming it's going to exceed what we already have in the plan that we, working county government already understand. So I just wanted to make sure that we were getting that out, out equally to people who were going to be looking at our conferences.
Yeah, and I appreciate that you, uh, really worked to condense this down from, what was it, our twenty-page document down to a five-page. My hope is that we will get more people that will take a look, make comments or inquire about some additional projects. I mean, maybe not, but, uh, five pages was a lot quicker to go through than, uh, you know, twenty pages, fifteen, twenty pages.
And, and I want to ask one question. I asked the other day about the public input phase and you said that was required. Is it required, but it's in the, in the C two C plan or in some, and it's not a legal requirement? I'm just questioning, I now that if we don't get more input, is it worth all the time of doing this? If, if we've gotten one piece of input in five or six years?
Yeah, I, I don't know, um, I don't remember the context in which I said it was required. I, I think just, um, I was going on overview of how we've done in the past, the process. And so we've, we've required the timeline to have that, that time built in for public comment. It is, it is not required by code or, um, actually even doing a cap- capital improvements plan ver- is not required by code. It's a practice that the board adopted a few years ago.
I think it's nice that people can have that time to see what we're doing and provide some comment, but.
I, I, yeah, I think it's but it's also something to revisit, to sort of look at and say, is it taking too much of Lance's time when we've had one comment in five years? That's just something we need to look at.
And maybe that's where we're sending it or how we're getting, you know, how we're getting, but yeah. Before we do the whole full thing next year, I would say let's revisit and see what kind of, you know, if we're getting, if, if we're getting anything for all of this this work that you're doing, yeah. It's good work, but if it's not, if it's not, you know, we're not doing it to do it, we're doing it to get input. If we're not getting input, then maybe we, we can make it since the first.
Yeah, and
the capital improvements plan at all, which No, 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 we need to do it. I'm talking about the public, all, all the additional work to do, the public, to get the public input when I do it.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, let's go on, it's on the agenda, everybody.
Yeah.
See, but
The planning is important. The planning is important.
Absolutely.
I'm not saying it is.
Gotcha. I was with the, yeah. So this is discussion and directions, so kind of sounding like we are wanting, we end to continue to move forward with what is provided here and put it out for public review, have that open until March sixteenth. It'd be after that time, Liam, would you be bringing it back to the board?
Right. Right.
Is that enough direction for her at this particular time? Okay. Set it up for you, Liam?
That is perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Okay, next up, upcoming agenda items, upcoming agenda items. We'll move on to public forum number two, comments from the public, not on this agenda, but board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. We both have public comment time, thirty, if the public would like to make any comment. See any, I will close, but with comment time. Next up, liaison assignments, committee meetings and announcements from supervisors. Anything that we would like to highlight at this particular time?
So from a calendar, we have a quarterly quarterly search board meeting tomorrow. Public spending budget. Look at my, uh, jurisdiction exactly to I'll break one here. And next week, this is a little past, and I probably won't have her scheduled, but next week on the nineteenth and the WMA, headwater assessment. And we are going to, um, probably get ready to set down our deep water shed assessment for the so that's, that's
Almost everything that was said. I got to tell on Friday. Then Monday, Monday is President's Day, correct?
Correct.
All right, so I have online the annexation, uh, meeting today that I'll, from A, I have a meeting tonight at five thirty. I think we have a budget review tomorrow morning and C C M T. Uh, I have the Thursday morning, seven thirty in the morning, I have the, uh, Central Iowa, um, C I, C I W D B quarterly joint board meeting every three months, so I will have that. Farm Bureau that evening and the jurisdictional meeting. I think we need to talk a little bit, because I think the Farm Bureau's rooms, I think they have a meal at six with the presentations or the discussions at six thirty to find out.
Yeah, jurisdiction's at seven, so somebody should run one meeting to go to me.
Right, right, right. And I was actually planning to be at the Farm Bureau probably in person. I know they offer I think in person or Zoom or whatever, so we can, we can, can kind of talk really how we want to do that. Um, I'll be in the office Friday. I do have a meeting with, uh, Les White and then with Agent Resources in the afternoon. We're off, uh, we're just going to just close that Monday for President's Day. Anything else additional? None? Is there a motion for adjournment?
Soon.
Moved in second, Markin. Basil?
I.
Seven?
I.
Our adjourn. Thanks, everybody.
The, I just noticed I didn't have a one o'clock conference call today. Okay, maybe we can get back with.